This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Okay, welcome everybody, just so that everybody understands it's a little, it's gonna be just a little bit different tonight when we start out. We do have a meeting that is going to happen before the regular city council meeting. I don't anticipate that it will probably last more than 10 to 15 minutes, but we do have what's called our Inland Lakes District Meeting and we are holding that first and then we'll go right into our regular council meeting. So just so you understand that, we are just going to do the Inland Lakes District Meeting. This is done on an annual basis. So I do call this Inland Lakes District Meeting to order. It's 6:01 PM and in attendance are... Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Well, and I should also tell you too that the Inland Lakes Meeting, it consists of two things. It consists of a public hearing where the public has the opportunity to talk about items that are related to the Inland Lakes and then the actual agenda and meeting of the Inland Lakes would be discussed after that. So, we are dealing with the public hearing first and the public notice that was posted or published on August 3rd and August 10th says, "Notice is hereby given that the public hearing and annual meeting of the City of Wapaka Public Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation District will be held on the 15th of August 2017 at 6:00 PM in the council And on that public notice is the agenda of the regular meeting and then really what the discussion that we will be having during the public hearing part of that will be the budget that is being proposed for 2018 for the Inland Lakes operation. So at this time, I will take testimony in favor of the 2018 proposed budget. If you'd like to make some comments, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Carol, I'm assuming that's you. That's why I said 15 minutes.
15 minutes, thank you. Carol Elbury, 33, Shadow Woods Lane, and never had so much time before. Anyway, thank you very much.
You don't.
For having a public comment. Oh, thank you, sorry about that. So obviously I speak in support of the budget although we have concerns about the bottom line, I will tell you that because with the discovery of Eurasian water milfoil with the more or less bad aquatic invasive species now in Mirror Lake as well as it has been found in the past in Shadow Lake, getting rid of it is getting, is actually costing some money. We had aquatic invasive species specialists for the county did a survey of both lakes and I'm happy to say she didn't find any in Shadow Lake which means keeping on top of it as we have the last several years has been good. We have to keep watching, it'll likely come back, but that's okay. But this year we've had to pay Golden Sands probably about $1,500 to help us pull the aquatic, that EWM, out of the channel. The channel is purely loaded between Mirror and Shadow Lakes. And of course, the current flowing from Mirror will take any of the little segments that break off right out into Shadow and so I'm really surprised that we haven't found any much in Shadow this year. So that's one of the, and that's something we're not gonna get around. We have to just every year have people help us pull it. Now, we have two divers who that are basically living here city, they're volunteers for the, they're volunteer firemen, so they have to dive periodically anyway to keep their certification. So they are happy to dive for us once or twice a year to try and pull it for the deeper water and they've done it, they did a good job in Mirror Lake last week. So, we're still looking for the most cost-effective way to interfere with getting the flow of nutrients out of the wetland across from Lakeside Parkway that flows through the channel down in the Lower South Park. That's been our big bugaboo. The nutrients are getting in through groundwater and from Mirror Lake as well as through that particular wetland channel. The problem at the wetland channel is that it feeds into the bay by the fishing pier and the problem there, if you've seen it all year or all summer, it's full of algae and that is a challenge there. So that's why that continues to be a problem. Early estimates have been real expensive, so we're just kinda trying to figure out other other ways to work around it. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at. Your volunteers have been doing a lot on their own and for the lakes and I think somebody should give them a hand, a hand for doing as much as they do. At any rate, any questions or other comments?
Well, and again, this is just for comments, but as long as Carol brought this up, if you look at the 2018 proposed budget, the estimation that there's only going to be about $2,200 left in that account at the end of the year, this account was originally funded many years ago through a grant that we received from the state of Wisconsin although we are allowed to tax for Inland Lakes protection within our city limits, we have never done that in the past. And that is a separate line item that actually ends up on your tax statement, so it's outside of levy limits and everything else. Kathy, I'm not speaking out of term, am I?
I have not checked with the DOR, the fact that we did not have a levy and now we are going to levy yet, but I would think that you could start the levy because it was zero to begin with.
Okay, alright. So, in either case, and if you just look at the 2016 annual and the 2017 estimate and then even the 2018 proposed, you will see that that money will be used up in another year here. So we will be looking probably to do some funding in the future whether it's applying for additional grants or having to actually have taxpayers help pay for this in the future, but that's for another date. Right now, we do have enough money to cover the proposed budget for 2018.
I would like to add one other comment. The staff has been very helpful. Both Aaron and Justin have really been helpful and checked on stuff when we've needed it and responded as some of the little point problems that we have. And Aaron and his staff have been testing the water from the channel throughout this year, so we do really appreciate their help, we need it. Thank you.
Great. Is there anybody else that would like to give testimony in favor of the proposed budget for 2018? Anybody else that would like to give testimony? How about testimony in opposition to the proposed budget for 2018? Any opposition? If not, I declare this public hearing closed at 6:08 and we will go right into the regular meeting of the Inland Lakes. And I do call this meeting to order and the same individuals, you're called commissioners on this Inland Lakes District, so you would be commissioners, the same commissioners are at this meeting that were at the public hearing. We have, first of all, we need to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut that we approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. You can see in your packet that you have minutes of the meeting that was actually held September 6th of 2016 and you've had the opportunity, I hope, to read that. We would be looking for an approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland that we approve last year's minutes of our annual Inland Lakes meeting. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. The next item is Resolution Number IL Inland Lakes-46 and basically that is the budget, proposed budget for 2018. And Carol is, actually, and thank you Carol, has explained the idea of what we will be using those funds for. I know that Aaron would also like to make some comments.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Smith. And actually Mayor Smith, you hit kinda some of the things I was going to mention on the head when you talked about the funding. I also want to just thank Carol and the friends of Mirror and Shadow Lake that even though costs have increased some here over the last year or so because of the presence of some of the aquatic invasive species, that cost could be higher if it weren't for their volunteer hours out in boats and pulling and doing what they do to keep the lakes healthy, so thank you guys for that. As staff, we will be looking at, you know, there were some grants that have funded it in smaller amounts in the past five to six years, so that will be on our front burner as we move throughout this year. As Mayor Smith mentioned, we only have about, after this year, maybe one year left at this pace, so we will be looking at things for AIS control and healthy lakes. And I think that is about the only comments I have, so thank you very much.
Okay, any questions on the, from the council members on the proposed budget? Mary, I know this is the first time you've been a commissioner on this. Hopefully you get updated a little bit on that or do you have any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve this resolution then.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Peterson that we approve Resolution Number IL-46. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Alright, and just the last couple items that are on here, old business, I don't think we have any, any new business that council would like to see this, this district take up in the future or discuss at this time? If not, we're looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut that we adjourn this Inland Lakes Protection and Rehabilitation District Meeting until our next annual meeting which will be August of 2018 and is always subject to call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Let's go right into the regular agenda too since we have quite involved meeting. Somebody's all set to do that? Except Sandy? The most important one? Alright. Okay, we have the regular agenda, I do call that meeting to order. It is 6:14 PM and I call this meeting to order and as always, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take roll for us, Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Next is the, on your agenda is the consent agenda. These are items that we vote on with one motion and unless there is any council member or staff that would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda where then we would vote on them and have discussion on an individual level for each one of those items. Anybody that'd like to see anything from the consent agenda moved? Hearing none, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda?
Hope approved.
Second.
Motion by Olson and second by Chestnut that we approve the consent agenda as printed? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, under the regular agenda, although I'm not adding anything to the agenda, I would ask, please, that if you look to new business, that we move the new business up to the, right after we vote on the regular agenda, move 9A? Is there a representative from the A.L. House here? Right? Okay, hold on just a second. So 9B and C? And Mitch, you're here for?
The chamber's ready.
Okay.
Okay, that's under announcements and correspondence?
Okay, so we're okay. So just 9A, B, and C. I'm asking that you move those up to, right after we approve this agenda.
Make a motion, we move them up, A, B, and C.
And approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Hackett.
Second.
Second by Keeland that we approve the agenda with those three items being moved to the beginning of the, of the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, then we're going to 9A right away? And this is a request by the Living the Wapaka Way for their second annual farm-to-table dinner on Thursday, August 31st, 2017. It's gonna be held from 6:30 to 8:30 PM on East Fulton Street and they have an application for a Class B, Class Retailers license and Beth Hall is here to represent them tonight. Beth, you wanna just tell us a little bit about your request and?
This is our second annual meeting that our Living the Wapaka Way Coalition is sponsoring. We did this last year to highlight local growers in the area and local produce. We held it on Fulton and Main and closed the street and we had really good attendance. In fact, we sold out right away, so we have increased the number of tickets that we've offered this year and it just gives us a chance to really highlight the local growers in our area. We purchase fresh produce and items from them and we feature that on the menu. This year, we're inviting the growers along to the meeting so people get to know who's in their area. So I think, if there's any questions, I can...
Okay, so the actual request, of course, is to ask for the temporary Class B license to sell beer.
Well, we're not, we're doing wine, we...
Not beer?
No, not beer, wine. We're just doing, we have Vicki Peschel as the licensed bartender. She is in, going to be serving and it's just gonna be a one six ounce serving that is going to, they get a drink ticket for all the adults and they get one glass and that's it for the night. So no beer, just the wine and...
Okay, so you're just asking for the wine license even though they go together basically? And then you're also requesting that the road be closed on East Fulton Street?
Yes.
From Jefferson to Main Street?
Yes, we were kind of coming on the, the front side of the Rotary is doing an event the following day for Oktoberfest and so we are using the same street, the same tent, the same tables and everything and so it'll be closed for that event. So we are just coming in a day early. Last year, they, we had it a different night, but it was still, that street was closed for us so that we could have people seated without worrying about getting run over or anything.
So, you would need the road to be closed, starting when?
Well, we are gonna set up at four if possible, so...
How does that work, Chief and Justin or Henry or whoever?
The council did approve the closure of the street early Thursday morning because for Rotary, the tent gets delivered Thursday and set up on Thursday. So the council's already taken action to close the street.
So they're not requesting the road to be closed, it's already been accepted?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Okay?
Question?
Question?
I just wondered, I know that Rotary is planning on porta potties and I just wondered where those were gonna be located and if they were going to be there for you on that evening?
Yes, they are and a hand washing station is gonna be there.
And do you know where they're gonna be located?
That I don't know because...
I'm concerned about the parking situation, you know, if we have those porta potties there for, on Jefferson, which I think is what they're talking about.
I can answer.
Great.
Not there you can't, but stand up to the podium. Charlie, give your name too, Charlie, don't know everybody knows you.
Charles Justman. I'm on, I'm on the Oktoberfest committee. The porta potties will be located on the street in back, the same as they are with the, with the Strawberry Fest. Same location.
So on Jefferson?
On Jefferson, yes.
And that's starting Thursday morning or?
They're going to be delivered Thursday noon-ish. I'd have to defer to Pat, Pat Pfeiffer on that, but it's Thursday noon-ish because we're making certain that they are there early enough so they can use them.
Okay, so you may need to block off those parking places knowing there will be people parking there all day because it's eight hour parking. So I just have concerns about making sure that they, they can get there, so that may be something else that we'll have to address Public Works about.
Yeah, you'll, in fact, you'll actually probably have to either deal with Justin or Roger on that. That shouldn't be something that they have to worry about.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, absolutely.
We, we were actually going to have them delivered on Friday, noon-ish or a little afternoon and then when they asked to use the tent, we said, "Sure, we can, we can tag team on this" and we're having the porta potties delivered early just so we can both use them. That was the rationale.
Sure, excellent. Sharing is good. Anybody else have any other questions about, understand what's going on here, they're piggybacking these two events together basically. So we're just approving basically the wine license tonight then, so we'd need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Peterson that we approve the Class B wines license for the Living the Wapaka Way for their second annual farm-to-table dinner. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Alright?
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a license report, this is 9B now. License report number 1378, this is a Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverage license for the Wapaka Hospitality Corporation, Wapaka A.L. House and, okay, I know we have a representative and the reason that this is on here, Henry, is?
There's new ownership.
Yes.
The agent isn't changing, Ryan Jacobson is currently still the, will be the new agent.
That's correct.
He was the current agent and they are selling the businesses.
That is correct.
Absolutely, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Darmaine Patel, I'm the president of Wapaka Hospitality and we are in process of purchasing it contingent upon our completion of our due diligence, but that's why we are applying for the Class B license. There will be no change to the business, business will continue as is, the license arrangements will continue as is.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Well, welcome to our community and good luck to you.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Absolutely, thanks.
Item 9C also belongs to me.
Sure, we'll do B first and then we'll go ahead and do C here too. Alright, thanks for helping me with my job.
Sorry.
Okay, 9B then, we would need to entertain a motion on the license report number 1378.
Make a motion, we approve that.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut that we approve license report number 1378. This is a Class B intoxicating liquor license, it's just really a change because of ownership. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried and then this is, goes right along with those license, they're asking for an arcade amusement device license and again, just because of the change of ownership, we are here to deal with that tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions there or else we're looking for a motion to approve this license report?
Motion approved, 1379.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Keeland that we approve license report number 1379. This is their arcade amusement device license. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, good luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Alright, let's go way back then to the beginning of the agenda. And we have under non-agenda items and announcements, Beth Anderson, our fixed-based operator from the airport is going to give us our annual presentation for her.
Good evening, thank you very much Mayor and Council. It's been a really eventful year at the airport this year. As of our asphalt project which started in 2016 that is wrapping up, there has been a few dimpling issues with the asphalt, but they are looking at repairing it in the next few weeks. I did have a keypad lock installed at the east gate of the terminal so pilots could enter the terminal after hours, which they've been very thankful for being able to use the facilities for that, so that was really nice. The EAA, the EAA Chapter 444 moved into our airport as of January 1st this year. They've been, it's been very nice because they've hosted many events at the airports. So this year along the chapter, not only do they use the terminal on the second Saturday of every month to host their monthly meeting, they have gained 12 new members since they moved out to Wapaka, so that was really nice. And so far, the chapter has had a chili cook-off which brought in about 70 people. They've had a Young Eagles event earlier this year that had brought in about 130 people which they flew the 67 children with eight aircraft. They've had two hamburger socials so far where the first event, they had 50 people at it and 70 at the second one and they're looking at their third one, I think, in a month or two, so we're looking to have a third one. Earlier this year, the Park and Rec Department along with Chapter 444 hosted a movie night at the airport which worked out perfect. We had perfect weather and about 100 or so people showed up for that. The chapter also had a Young Eagles fly-in or rally at that time where they flew 23 children and actually some of the parents went flying with the pilots also. Also in June, the Wapaka Caregivers Coalition hosted the Ageless Aviation at the airport where we had flown 12 veterans and a steerman. There were two people that wanted to fly but didn't qualify for the steerman, so one of our Chapter 444 members, Jim Paschke, donated his time and plane and made sure they got a, they got a flight along with some of the people that were actually helping out at the event, also got a flight from him. The Lions Club hosted another successful Father's Day Pancake Breakfast out at the airport even though the weather wasn't that great. Cherokee's to Oshkosh were back for their eighth consecutive year and what was really great is they had a successful flight into Oshkosh where all 21 planes were actually able to make the mass takeoff and arrival thanks to Richard at the RPA Aviation to fix the two problems, the two planes that did have problems. We also had the Piper Sessna Flyer Group show back up at Wapaka. Their group has grown into over 80 people. When they originally started, there was 12 people back in '09, so they keep on continuing to grow and bring people into Wapaka for that. We had, we have an aerobatic box every year, so we did have a few pilots use the aerobatic box and then with the traffic for EAA this year, we had 719 passengers with over 1,000 operations during the two weeks of EAA. 464 were piston aircrafts, 12 of them were jets, 404 being transit people along with over 4,500 gallons of fuel being sold during those two weeks alone. So all in all, it's been really a busy and exciting year with a lot of new events at the airport and hopefully to continue, so a lot of the groups are looking to come back next year. So, if any questions, that's what I got.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah. Getting out of here before you ask any questions.
Right.
Alright, well, thank you. Alright, well, thank you, Beth, and we appreciate the update on that. We don't always get out to the airport as much as you are, obviously, so it's good to get that information.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, next we have, under announcements, this is the, actually the first annual, I think, in a way, right? But this is a presentation on the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, their second quarter room tax report. And Terry and Mitch are here tonight.
You're going to get us both tonight?
Alright. You can. Mitch knows that if he brings his daughter with him, then I'll move it up so you can get her home earlier.
Creative marketing, right?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our first year as the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitor Bureau. And just kind of some bullet points on tourism, room tax dollars and promoting the area and such. We're very fortunate that we live in a state that's very tourism savvy and we have a great tourism department that invests a lot of dollars into our state and into tracking tourism and such. And these are just some quick figures. The Department of Tourism contracts with Longwoods International annually, and they also are the same research agency that does our counterparts in our neighboring states. And these are some figures for 2016 for the Wapaka County area. Total business sales in Wapaka County were $139.9 million in 2016 and 1% increase over the previous year. Of the $20 billion spent statewide on tourism, Wapaka County saw an $89.2 million in direct visitor spending. There are 1,276 jobs with a personal income of $24.4 million that are directly supported in the tourism arena. And visitors to Wapaka County generated $10.5 million in state and local taxes during 2016, but I realize this is county as a whole. There's, in their research, there's five reasons that Wisconsin is winning in this tourism game over our Midwest neighbors, and that's affordability, family atmosphere, sports and recreation, worry-free, people feel safe in Wisconsin, and uniqueness. Some of the things we're doing at the CVB and Chamber in promoting Wapaka area tourism, there's a list of advertising magazines that we're working with. Some are statewide, some are regional, and some are national tourism-related magazines. We do some television in the Green Bay Fox Cities Market promoting Wapaka and making memories. Billboards, we're doing one on Highway 10 out near the Grand Slam Mini Golf. And we experimented with a new one in the Fremont area, coming from the east to the west, a new digital one that's owned by a Jones sign. And the neat thing about that is we can continuously update those messages. And so, we did a three-month trial. It's kind of coming to a conclusion, but we'll probably look at some other options in the fall and winter for some of the other activities. We participate in at least one trade show annually, and that's the Canoe Copia Show in Madison, and it's the largest paddling and trade show in the world. And we have such beautiful assets to promote in this area, be it our, all of our natural resources, our trails, our lakes, our streams and such. We do a lot with our social media and that continues to grow. And sometimes we do some paid advertising or boosting, targeting special interest demographics and such to promote the events and functions in the area. And of course, our bigger events like Strawberry Fest, the Fourth of July Celebration, the Chain Lake Blues Festival, we do some certain targeted advertising and promotions for that. Printed Guides, our Chain Lake Visitor, area visitor guide, we produce $35,000, or $35,000 copies of those. And we came out with a new Silent Sports Guide. We did 5,000 of those as an initial run. We're almost out of those, so we're looking at a rerun of those. Some of the feedback we've heard from a couple of the holidays earlier, the Memorial Day weekend, overall lodging and retailers felt things were up from the previous year. And the Fourth of July weekend and holiday, again, reporting a strong holiday and strong retail sales. One of the lodging facility managers stated he thought there were more people in the Wapaka area this year on the Fourth of July than is seen in the past 15 years. So, that's good positive feedback to hear. And I guess just moving down, the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau started the new application process for the grants, for the tourism development grants. And the first run happened this spring and will be doing the second one later this month with awards going out in October. But for this initial run, $47,109 in tourism development grants were given to seven organizations, one being Weha for $25,000. And the Curling Club, for some, they had requested for equipment, locker, replacement and a new camera system for $12,000. The Wapaka Historical Society for Specialty and Statewide Marketing, $4,000. The Wapaka Community Arts Board for Arts on the Square Event, $4,000. Wapaka Lions Club for their Rod and Classics Show, $500. Wapaka County Fair for Entertainment, $1,500. And just a little note on that, we've heard feedback from the hotels that there's a lot of rooms booked for the Wapaka County Fair this year because of the entertainment they've stepped up with this year. And then just a small $109 one to the Town of Farmington for a Bike Trails brochure they have produced. And then there's a chart that follows on kind of the history of the room tax that's been collected. Terry's going to talk a little bit about that history.
I guess we just wanted to kind of give you a vision of room tax and what it looks like on a monthly basis and how it's collected. Obviously, it's pretty well-known in our area that summer is our big months and you can see that by the charts. But I also want you to notice that our early spring and fall have started to rise in the amount of room tax dollars we're collecting. We're really, from the CVB and the Chamber standpoint, we're trying to do more advertising and more activities in those timeframes and trying to increase those room tax dollars that come into our community. And I think by looking at the charts, you can see that that's happening over the last several years. So, I think the things that we're doing, the advertising that we're purchasing, the events that we're doing are creating a difference in how the room tax flows into the community. So, that's basically it. Does anybody have any questions for us? I guess the only other note I would have is that we are going to have a second round of grants available. Our deadline will be the end of September, so if there are any other organizations in the community that are looking for some room tax dollars for an event or some advertising that they'll be doing, they can go to our website and find the applications and the information or give our office a call.
Thank you, Terry and Mitch. Appreciate the update on what's going on and how you're handling the room tax dollars. Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Next is public input. If there's anybody that would like to give us some public input on any non-agenda items, so if it's not on the agenda tonight and you'd like to make a presentation to us or discussion to us, please step up to the podium and limit your time to three minutes or less. Is there anybody that would like to speak to us on public input? Okay, we'll go to 7C then, which is department announcements and reports. And I'm going to ask, since it's, there are nothing to be approved by these department announcements, and I don't want the department to have to feel rushed by, because we do have some people in the audience tonight, so I'm going to ask that we actually move this, the department reports, to the end of, what is it, number nine, right before the closed session that we have tonight. Anybody have any issues with that? Council members, are you okay with that? Okay. So, let's move forward then and go to, under unfinished business, we have discussion, action to talk about the community development investment grant agreement between the WEDC, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, and the city of Wapaka. And again, I, just to give you a little background, I'm sure most of you remember this, back in July of 2016, the city of Wapaka entered into an agreement with WEDC to receive a grant that was to, that the city applied for and that was to be used for a Dock Addys, which would be a brewery, winery and distillery on Main Street. When we signed that agreement, we then sent that agreement down to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. And what happened was, and Paul brought that up at one of our earlier meetings, Paul Mayo did, that actually the agreement got changed. For some reason, what we signed and what WEDC signed were two different things, and really it came down to this. And correct me, Paul, if you can, Paul if you want, or Henry or Brennan, but I'm going to just summarize, because most of the agreement was, or all of the agreement was unchanged except for the agreement, the part where it said, "Payment will be expected," and I'm just kind of telling you in my thoughts how, what it does here. Repayment will be expected if the, if Dock Addys was to go out of business in five years or less. And the agreement we signed said, "Or moved out of the state of Wisconsin." Now, the agreement that WEDC returned to us with their signature on it and also my signature on it, so they inserted a page, basically, said, instead of "or," it said "and." So, it basically said, "Going out of business before five years and moving out of the state of Wisconsin." Okay? So, the business would have to move out of the state of Wisconsin. So, there's a big difference between "or" and "and." And WEDC, and Henry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm just kind of leading this, but I've had plenty of discussion with Henry and Brennan and John Hart on this before this meeting. Henry has actually called down to WEDC and talked to Nalita Burr, who was our contact and still is our contact on that, even though she's not in this district anymore. And she agrees, that's what the agreement says. It says "and." It does not say "or." Okay? So, I believe what we need to do tonight is we need to look at accepting this agreement with the term in there "and" instead of "or," because that's not what council agreed to back in July of 2016. So, in my mind, the agreement that we accepted and the agreement that WEDC signed are two different agreements. And WEDC is saying that it should say "and," and this is a grant from them. So, if you're in acceptance with that and that it does say "and," we would ask that we have a motion that says that, that you're okay with it being changed from "or" to "and." Now, I don't want to muddy the waters here, but I also want to tell you that there are also other things that, and you have to remember back to our meeting a month ago, there are some other things that we are going to ask WEDC to change, and we already agreed to those at the last meeting. And those are some of the dates that need to be in conclusion and, help me out Brennan, sorry.
It's the scope of the project as well.
Okay, and the scope of the project, okay? So, the scope means, what were they going to do to earn that grant, okay? And they're changing the, Dock Addys is asking that the scope be changed a little bit. And you remember, they had that, the one thing was the "and/or" for the, here we go with the "and/or"s again, but you know, they had winery, brewery, distillery, and they wanted to say winery and/or brewery and/or distillery. Brennan, I'm okay on that?
That is correct.
Okay. And council was okay with that at the last meeting, so I'm just telling you that that's one of the changes that WEDC has not looked at yet. And so, we don't know if they're going to accept that yet, you know, and I can't even give you the percentage of chance that they will, but they do want to see this project move forward too, so I would think that they would probably be okay with that, but I'm not sure. And then, of course, the scope, as we talked about, when the grant was originally written, it did include just one phase, basically, of doing the first floor and the second floor, which actually included an elevator on that property too. And basically, their Dock Addys is, and you'll get the opportunity, Jan, to correct me if I'm wrong here, but they're basically splitting that up into two phases, although they do believe they're going to spend the amount that has been requested to get the full amount of the grant from WEDC on the Phase 1. So, basically, they're not going to be doing the second floor at this time, but they still anticipate spending that same dollar amount that the grant application was for. Okay? So, that's unchanged too. So, those are things that you've already agreed to. The only thing you have not agreed to is making sure that our agreement matches WEDC's agreement that they signed that says "and" instead of "or." And obviously, if it says "and," you're looking at a situation where they would have to go out of business and they would have to move that business out of the state of Wisconsin. And what are the chances of that happening? You know, I mean, it's so minimal that it, I can't even calculate it, you know? So, it changes a lot from when it says "or," because now if it says "or," then it would mean that if they went out of business in five years, they would have to repay it or might have to repay it, is how WEDC put it. And we were under the understanding, of course, that it said "or," but it now says "and." And when we did our development agreement, we still based it on "or." We didn't base it on "and." So, again, you're going to see another request right after this, if you're okay with changing that part from "or" and now it says "and." So... So with that, I'll open it to discussion. I know Henry and Brennan and John Hart are all available to answer questions too, if you have those. Laurie.
I would have a question on, and it's going to go back to how this got changed, okay? Back and forth, but have you reached out to any of the other recipients of the awards to see if their, if their words were changed around in that, or have you had a look at that to see if it was just us, if it was other recipients? Because what is she, she says, according to Robert's letter, that she doesn't have any recollection of any prior cities receiving grant money imposing greater repayment restrictions than the WEDC contract. Did you reach out to other communities to look at what, how theirs had been written?
Henry, Brennan.
Well, you know, actually, following that last meeting, you know, because there was the conjecture and why this and why that, I did take it upon myself, I thought it was in my ability to do so, to call the EDC, and they're fully aware of the change and they are fully knowledgeable of it. We did seek grant agreements from other communities in that same grant cycle, and it has the "or" language in it. So it's more restrictive in the other communities. Now, they're the granting agency. I don't know, you know, what all criteria they use, but they're the granting agency. So however they chose it, they're aware of it. The other thing that is a piece of information you should have is that the grant is really tied to completion of the project, and the project is the renovation, and it is a reimbursable grant. If the work doesn't get done, it doesn't get done, and those are eligible costs, they won't be recognized and the grant won't be fully reimbursed. Now, they talk about jobs in the grant agreement. I wanted you to see the grant agreement, and they talk about jobs in there. So there is a, obviously, an expectation that they're going to open and operate as a business, but in terms of the EDC, and the information that I garnered was, the grant is reimbursable, the work is done, and a key point of this grant is to refurbish real estate and improve the buildings in our downtown. And that's, will be recognized or not as soon, as long as the work is done. The other thing that's worth noting in those other agreements, and it's different than what you've talked about in the past, is that those other communities don't pay out the money until the project is totally complete. No progress payments is what's contemplated in the Doc Addys process, project. So that's, might be something you want to, if you're going to reconsider, that even reduces the risk more, because the project is totally complete, you have all the invoices, and you submit everything one time, and then it's done. And you don't have, well, you get a progress payment here, and for some reason it doesn't get completed and all the work. So that is a nuance in those other agreements that's worth noting too. But long answer to your question.
Yeah, it was a long answer, but basically, Laurie, the answer is, our agreement is unique to the other agreements in the state. The other grants that were given out, not sure why it's unique, but WEDC, who is the one that's giving us the grant, is aware of it and is okay with it, as far as we, well, they are okay with it, because that's what they signed, is "and." So why they changed it, we don't know why they changed it, and I'm not sure that we really care that much, because as long as we both agree to the same thing, WEDC and the city. So I'm not sure, maybe it's because ours are newer and they felt that that was a better way to go, I'm not sure. So Brennan, did you have anything to add on that, at this time?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, what happens if we don't accept the amendment?
Well, what I see is we are going to, if that's the case, we are going to send in a grant agreement that says "or," along with the change of the scope and the change of the dates, and WEDC will have to decide whether they're going to accept that "or" or not. Yeah. So that's the way I see it. I don't know, John, do you want to touch on that at all?
You would have that option.
Yeah. Okay. Dave?
My question would involve, once this project is so-called completed, who is the monitoring agent that determines it was all put in? Brennan or somebody from the WEDC?
Brennan can best answer that, yeah.
If you look within the grant agreement, because the money is awarded to the city and we're the conduit between that and then to the project that we deem appropriate, the applicants or Doc Addys would have to provide me semi-annual reports, so there's at least a minimum two reports per year that I would have to do. Doc Addys would have to provide me information that's outlined within the grant agreement about job retention, money spent, and everything else that I would have to prepare and then send off to the state. So that, all the reporting requirements are on the city to do.
The reporting requirements are on the city, but WEDC decides whether the money that's being spent fits within the scope.
Correct, on the payment request, correct. But then after, after all the payments are done and allocated to the applicant, there are, for the five-year period, there are semi, I have two reports plus an end-of-the-year report I have to do for the project. So I have three reports a year, which I would have to get information from the applicant for.
Any other questions?
So I just want to be sure, so the other recipients that were awarded monies, it is "or" in those? So ours is the only one that is "and"?
Well, and, exactly, and I, I think, I think you have to understand this too, though. It's kind of, here you have a grant that's being offered to the city of Wapaka to help a business to improve a downtown that needs improvement, and they're making the grant agreement more lenient than they are for other communities, where it probably will never have to be paid back. We should be saying, "Thank you." You know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't get why they changed it to "or," but we should be saying, "Thank you" to that. Now, the development agreement is another issue, obviously, and we'll talk about maybe that later, but in a way, to me, it looks like the WEDC is doing us a favor, and that, not in a way, they are, because they're changing it to make it a point where it might never get paid back. Now, we can all say, what's going to happen if it doesn't work out, you know? The money won't have to get paid back, but the money maybe didn't get used wisely, but I got to tell you, people, this money, this is grant money that WEDC is going to pay out. They're going to pay it out to somebody. They're going to pay it out to some community, and why not us? For a project that might, well, you know that it's going to improve the downtown, because they're going to invest in a property that's worth $85,000 now, and it's going to be worth $1.2 million when it's done. So, you know, I mean, we have this opportunity to be able to make an investment in our downtown. And again, I get the whole thing, is it fair? You know, I mean, is it fair that they're getting $215,000 when somebody else put 100% of their own money up there? Probably not. But life isn't fair all the times here, you know? I mean, would I have wished when I made improvements to my business that I had this available to me? And it probably was, I just didn't know about it. You know, yeah, I would have took advantage of it too, you know, if I could have, but I didn't know it was available, or even if it was available at the time. So again, I think those are all legitimate arguments, and I get it, but again, I also look at what this grant can do for our downtown. And what it also looks like is, and remember what we did when we did some changes to how we handle economic development in our community? The very first thing I said to you is, "I want people to know that we are open for business in our community. We want businesses to come to Wapaka." Let's not forget that. That's an important part of this whole thing. And how does that look if we, if we don't take advantage of something that can help us in our community? And I know there's some downsides to it, and I know there's some upsides to it, but you got to look at the whole picture. So, any other discussion on that?
And, you know, I'd just like to say thank you to all those businesses who have come in and done it on their own and strived and worked really hard, because it is, it is out of their pockets, and they don't seem to whine or be upset about anything, they just keep moving forward in their, in their own way. So we need to thank them and remember them.
Absolutely, absolutely. I totally agree with you. So I guess I'm asking you to reconsider agreeing to the WEDC agreement that they signed and changing that one sentence so it says "and," so it will say "and" instead of "or." And at this time, not hearing any other discussion, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion, we accept the WEDC's development agreement using the word "and" in paragraph seven, sub-paragraph A.
Yeah, we have a motion by Pritchatsky. We have a motion by Pritchatsky.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Olson, that we change the grant agreement so that it says "and" instead of "or." And this goes along with the other changes that we did a month ago, and Brennan will put that all together and send it in to WEDC when it gets all done. Okay, any discussion now that we are on the floor with a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I'd just like, I'd just like to echo what you said, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, we put out the, let's be known that Wapaka's open for business when we started this downtown visioning committees and the internal staff committee we use to speed up development, and, you know, if we don't let this project go through, and I've talked to various business people in the town now, they echoed, they want to see this happen. Let's use this grant. We want, we want Wapaka to be open for business, especially in the north end, so this is, this is a good thing, and we need to do it.
Okay, any other discussion? Dave?
Maybe this is out of position here, but I'm concerned with that, having to pay back if something went wrong, so apparently that's not going to be a problem. We don't even pay them the money until the building is improved, according to all the literature I read. That building will certainly stay here, so the improvement stays here. And apparently, the WEDC will not be asking for it back. I'm here just to make sure the taxpayers are protected primarily, and it sounds like they are, whether it's either way, other than the...
Well, if you're asking a question, or are you making a point? I'm not sure.
I guess I'm making a point more than anything. Their letters were very compelling, saying that the money's got to get used properly, and it's going to stay here in the town, even if they would, well, they're not going to take the building improvements away. I was hit by that, and the fact that apparently if it is used that way, the WEDC will not be asking for it back. Got it?
Okay, any other discussion? This is an agreement, so we would be looking for a roll call vote, so I'll ask Sandy to take roll.
Eric Wilson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Abstain.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
No.
Steve Hackett?
He sided.
Laurie Chestnut?
I'm going to vote no, thank you.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Six ayes, two noes, one abstain, and one absent. Motion carried.
Okay, as I said, then Brennan will put together the grant agreement that he is going to send down to WEDC, and of course, he'll get the assistance of Doc Addys in helping him with the dates and the scope of the, of the business that it's going to be. But that term will be changed from "or" to "and." As you can see in your packet, and it starts on page 141, which I don't have a page 141 here, kind of, so let me get there first. There is a letter from Jan Box, who is one of the members of Doc Addys. And understand this, people, that you agree to develop, you agree to a developments agreement, council agreed to a development agreement back in February, and you also agreed to a development agreement, in a way, at the last meeting in July. But Doc Addys has not signed that agreement. So what they're asking is that we continue to negotiate that development agreement, and that's why it's back in front of you again tonight, is because even though council has approved that, it's still a negotiation item, and they are asking then for us to negotiate some things, and this will give us the opportunity to negotiate some things too, like Henry had suggested, and, you know, that will be open to discussion. Maybe instead of two payments, if we agree to this, that there would be just one payment, and that payment would be at the end of the, at the end of the project, and that's something that council could ask Doc Addys to agree to. So, I mean, that would just be one item, and that would make it even more safe to the residents of, citizens of Wapaka and Wisconsin, for that matter. So that would be something that is negotiable, obviously, here too. So you do have a letter from, from Jan Box and one of the members of Doc Addys, and he's basically asking council to reconsider that we take out of the development agreement that says that we will pay back WEDC even if WEDC does not ask for that money. That's in there, I don't know that it's worded exactly like that, but that's what it says. Okay? And the other thing that he is asking is, is that you no longer approve the letter, you no longer require the letter of credit, but that you accept his and Robert's personal guarantees for the amount of this grant. And Jan, do you want to say anymore about that request? Am I missing anything?
I think particularly.
Can you just speak to the podium? We're on TV tonight, so you got to put your makeup on and get up to the podium there for us.
Jan Box, one of the members of Doc Addys. I appreciate the comments tonight and our support. Part of the developers agreement, we would like to have match the WEDC agreement with the city, that the monies, grant monies repaid if we go out of business in less than five years and move out of state. Attorney Markowitz in Milwaukee told this council that my personal financial statement is more than adequate to cover repayment of the grant, should it ever be necessary, but as we've heard tonight, that chance is near zero percent. One comment on distribution of the grant money. If you hold it all to the end of the project, that means we'll have about six months' interest extra on the $227,000 to pay the bank, as opposed to it being distributed as the work is done. is done. And I don't know if you want to do that to us. The WDC agreement says it's to be distributed as appropriate construction is approved. Not all one time at the end of the construction project, probably because businesses then have to pay more interest to cover that grant money until the entire project is completed. Subs and contractors want to be paid, not wait till end of the project when the grant is awarded.
Anybody have any questions of, of Jan? At this time? Open discussion, council? Just make sure you run it through me here, so we don't have everybody talking at once, if, if at all.
Brian, you indicated that the WDC says that it should be, or people have waited to the end? How many, does that happen?
I didn't say that.
Henry did? Okay.
Well, she said that it, that is how most communities do it. And she cited the project up in Green Bay, the hotel project up there. Midway through, you know, ownership changed and they're working through all that. It just reduces the risk a little bit, and I understand Mr. Box's comment about the additional interest, but, you know, you're asking for movement of this council. Seems to me that you should move as well, a little bit, and accept that one payment as a way to try to mitigate the, the feeling of the risk here.
We're happy to accept, but I just wanted to know what the consequences are.
Well, if the project goes quick and, you know, got a good builder and you're gonna be purposeful with it, you know, it's, as quick as you get us the invoices and we can process it, you know, the state, it may take 30 or 45 days for them to get the money back. But, you know, we're committed to get it, get it in there, you know, to do it as quick as we can.
Thank you.
Scott, you have a comment?
Can you restate then, if, when we're gonna have to make a motion on this, something we're discussing? One of the stipulat, it's the letter of credit, and what was the other one? There just two things we need to change, or what, or what are we asking?
Yeah.
So, I can, or someone can state it properly?
Well, there are two things, but I think Brennan can explain it better than I can, so.
Within the developers' agreement, there's a requirement for the letter of credit, so that would need to be removed. And a chance to accept Mr. Jan and Mr. Force's, that's personal guarantee request, that's number one. There's a requirement in there that states that regardless whether WDC requests the money to be repaid, we had always intended to repay the money back whether or not they, you know, WDC requested it or not, so that would have to be changed. Also, there's just the standard dates and everything else that would have to be changed as well, based upon an agreement between us and Doc Addys, if one construction was start and finish.
That answer your question? Again, we put in there, and you have to understand a little bit of the history too, but we put in this development agreement because we had a grant that occurred out in, by the airport, and how many years later, Brennan, the state almost asked for that grant money back, and we were concerned about that. So, you know, our decision at that time, when it said "or" was, is that if there's a possibility that any time in the future that we are gonna have to pay it back, we might as well pay it back right away. And that was kind of the decision on why we put it in the development agreement. But now that we've changed it to "and," the chances of WDC asking for it back, well, the chances of them even being able to ask for it back is, is minimal, at best.
And then the other request would be, or the other change in the developers' agreement would be, if the council decides, would be changing the payment schedule from two down to one.
Doug, I, I think, in essence, you're hearing from staff that they would prefer to see that one payment versus two payments.
And to concur with Henry's comments, the developed, the grant agreements and developers' agreements that I received from three different communities, I believe two of them had that language in there, that payments would be at the end of construction.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Paul.
What we're considering here is removing two aspects of the development agreement that, that apply to accountability for, for performance. They're getting $225,000 in state taxpayer money, and we're being asked to change the agreement so that if they go out of business in six weeks or six months, the money's gone. Now, it's correct that the building improvements have been made, but they're part of Jan's net worth. So, the, he still owns the buildings, the grant money goes into his net worth, and it's, it's, the, the reason for the grant is not to develop buildings, it's to develop economic activity. The, every agreement that we've been able to identify between WDC and cities has "or" in it, and there's a reason for that. The reason is, so developers don't come forth asking for a grant on wild shots in the dark. This appears to be a wild shot in the dark, because KMA, CPAs from Madison told us that this project stands an 80 to 90 percent chance of failure, not in five years, but in two years. That is why Kathy requested the letter of credit. Brennan agreed, KMA agreed, Attorney Markowitz agreed. And council agreed to this in November, as did Jan and Robert, and they agreed to it again in February. It all worked then. For some reason, it doesn't work now. And I read this six-page letter to council and, which is full of misdirection and some incorrect statements, but bottom line, they're threatening to pull the plug on the project because it just won't work with a letter of credit. Well, it worked in February, why doesn't it work now? So, we have, I think, an obligation to be good stewards of this money. It's $225,000. A few years ago, or a couple of years ago, we cut the UW Systems budget by 300 million. The governor is looking to borrow 400 million dollars to repair our roads. Heck, we don't even pick up dead deer on the side of the road anymore, because we can't afford it. But Henry, how much has our shared revenue been cut over the past six, eight years? Five, $600,000? Transportation aids? Because the state can't afford it. And we're contemplating putting this money at risk, 80 to 90 percent chance of failure in two years, without any accountability. And I, I won't be a party to that.
If I may respond to that?
You can.
Our accountants are in contradistinction to KMA, our accountants from Shank in Appleton, say that this business has a very good chance of success over the first five years.
I, I read that. It's a two-paragraph letter that expounds on the popularity of craft breweries. And if this has a craft brewery, that's a good thing. That's essentially what the letter says.
The conclusion is, this business will be successful, and that is against the opinion of the accountants that you hired out of Madison. The letter of credit was agreed to in February, because if I provided a personal financial statement to this council, it would not be held confidential. I have no interest in having my financial net worth and finances spread around the county. In Feb, in...
Paul, hold on a second.
I've got the floor.
Let him finish.
In February, Kathy and Brennan said they would accept either a letter of credit or a personal guarantee. For the reason I just mentioned, I did not want to do a personal guarantee. Now that it's been reviewed by one of your attorneys in Milwaukee, and you know my net worth is, can cover the grant should it ever be recalled, we want to go back to the personal guarantee for that reason, because it obviates us having to take out, in essence, a loan with the bank to cover the letter of credit. And to cover that, you need 125 percent of collateral. So, if you have a grant of $227,000, we have to come up with collateral of $281,000 to cover that letter of credit. That reduces our ability for cash flow and to get this project completed. The grant is given to improve downtown, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to take a derelict building that's been empty for about seven years, that's worth $85,000. We're going to put $1.2 million into it, of our money, our loan money, that we guarantee the bank, to improve that. Since August of last year, when this started, the city has lost $33,600 in taxes that we would have paid, because this project is not complete. As we go forward, every year, the tax rate, unless it increases, which taxes never do, will pay the city $33,600 in real estate tax. That's in addition to us bringing employees to town, foot traffic downtown, and improving Main Street. That's all I have for the moment.
Can I respond? You can. My point, Jan, was that the letter of credit worked in February. It worked in, it worked in November. You knew about that, in November. And I would imagine you met with your, your people, your attorney, your accountant, financial advisors, the three months between November and February, and it worked. And you accepted it in, in, in February. But apparently, it doesn't work now. I'll also comment, you said you're gonna be, you know, providing jobs. Jobs on that level, in this city, and I think in most cities in Wisconsin and throughout America now, there's more jobs than employees. You go look around town, there's help wanted signs everywhere. And you, coming into town, being subsidized by the government, are gonna, gonna compete with existing businesses that paid their own way, and you're gonna be competing for customers and competing for employees. All right. I'm all for the project. Okay, don't get me, we...
You are?
Yeah, I, I am. I'm not for the, I'm not for the grant being unsecured. All right? I'm all for the project. And you know, you complimented Denny and I on July 20, on July 18th, that we were a big help to you, and we were.
That was the last time you were a big help.
So, competing for employees, competing for customers and being subsidized by the government, I'm not sure that's our role. As a matter of fact, I'm sure it's not our role.
The subsidy is to improve a derelict building, so that it doesn't remain empty, and it can only be used for the infrastructure of the building, not pictures, or TVs, or glasses, or knife, fork and spoon.
Is that why the WDC agreements with other cities have repayment possibility for going out of business or moving out of state?
They like our plan, they changed it to "and." They like this project a lot, they've said it to both city council and to us, that this is a project they want to see happen.
Well, that's not completely true, that they're removing all the accountability, Paul, because you, they are not gonna get the grant money until they put $1.2 million into the building. So, they're, they're putting $1.2 million into that building. There's no doubt about that, because they're not gonna get the grant unless they do that. So, if they end up putting in $600,000 into that building, they're only gonna get half the grant, basically. So, I don't know if it works exactly that way, Brennan, but it, it kinda works that way.
There's a, there's a ratio that's outlined within the WDC grant agreement. It's all based upon physical construction. If they put in less than that, then they get, you know, based upon the percentage of the ratio, they'll most likely get less money from the state.
It actually works out to be about $961,000 of hard infrastructure improvements, and the rest of it is fixtures, furniture, equipment. And if it's $961,000 neighborhood dollars, it qualifies for $227,000 in grant money. But the total improvements of the building, including furniture, fixtures, equipment, and all associated items, is 1.2 million, and that's what the bank loan is. But hard construction's about $961,000.
Is it, I guess, are we parsing things? The letter of credit is a most, more secure, much easier from our standpoint to guarantee. But the personal guarantee, in that development agreement, you're signing a separate document that's, that you're a guarantor on that, on, on this project. The city has, if the WDC requires repayment, then you will repay that money.
Yes, I will.
Okay, so you're on record as saying that, so if this ever goes forward and we have a hard time getting the money from you. Yeah, I think that's the distinction. It's still secure, but there's a concern that we're gonna be battling you in court for two years to get the money. That's why the letter of credit is superior, because it's, you know, we deal with the bank, and in a week, we got the money.
Well, let me, let me, let me just touch a little bit on the letter of credit, and let's, let's completely understand, and Jan actually told you what he said. Now, everybody knows that I'm an accountant by trade, okay? And as soon as the letter of credit was recommended, I said, "There's no way they're gonna agree to that." There's no way they're gonna agree to that. And you know why? Because it ties up money that they could be using to operate their business. So, now he has to tie up $280,000 because of the letter of credit, that he could be putting, putting into his business to keep it going. And you know, Paul, and anybody that runs a business here knows, that it's gonna take a lot of your own money to keep this business going for quite a while, because you don't open the doors and make a profit from day one. You know, it took me six years in my accounting business before I had to quit borrowing money to make, pay payroll. You know, it takes a long time. And if you have that money available to you to do that, it's gonna make it so that it has a better chance of being successful. And if we take that 280, $280,000, I'm not saying take it away, but if we tie that $280,000 up, that he could be using to meet his everyday expenses, we're asking it to fail. Especially in the consideration that there is no chance, hardly at all, minimal, that we'll ever have to pay this grant back. But he's gonna have to tie it up for five years, and that money could be used to pay payroll and to pay his vendors, and make it through a winter or two, until the business really gets going. And he, if he doesn't know that he has to use his own money to get this up and running, then he shouldn't be doing this. He must know that he's going to have to put a lot of his own money into this to make sure that it keep, that it, that it cash flows sometime in the future. Because that's the only way it's gonna be successful. And I've been doing business tax returns for years, and startup businesses, and every business I know is short on cash flow when they start out. And it, they have to come up with the money somehow, some way. They either have to borrow the money, they have to use their own money, or they close the doors. And what we're asking, what he's asking here, is that you don't tie up $280,000 that he could be using to keep the doors open, when he has some lean times.
To that point, Mayor, I talked to a very successful businessman in this town, and he echoed exactly the same thing you said. It just, it ties up, it costs you more. He's had to do it. And Paul, I don't know what your motives are, you know, bucking the system here a little.
Be careful.
Well, I'm just, I, it seemed you don't want it to be successful.
You be careful, Scott. No, Paul, you let him talk first, and then you can say something.
I don't know, I, it's just like, I like to see it go forward, and I don't like to see people, you know, trying to not make our city, you know, prosperous, like you said.
And I, and I will agree with Paul too, though, Scott. I mean, Paul has his own opinion, you have your own opinion. We're not here to judge what other people say.
He sounded a little upset with something.
So, I will say that. Let's be very careful.
Okay. I think listening to Henry say that, you know, give and take a little bit for Jan to give a little bit, for us to give a little bit, that we need to work more together. And I think the, something that I was, concerns me is all this change, okay? It's, it's never like, good enough, okay? And it keeps coming back, and that is what makes me real nervous, Jan, is that. That is what makes me nervous. It seems like if we change one thing, that's well and good for a little bit of time, and then it's back to change another thing. So, I like what Henry had to say about that. We need to work together, and that doesn't seem to be what you have in mind. It's like I words, me words, and I think it needs to be us words. This is a city that we all love. This is a city that we all serve. So, getting the us words and getting more involved in that, and listening on both sides, Henry, those were good words.
I wouldn't put one point two million dollars into a city that I didn't love or care for. And I agree, we can give as well as the city can give. And I said, "We would accept a one-time payment at the end of construction." But I want you to aware, be aware, though, that that increases the amount of interest loan money that we have to pay between startup and finish. I don't know what it is. Brian could probably calculate it in two seconds, but it does increase our cost of construction, because we have extra interest.
But that would not make you different from any other person who has received these awards in other communities, and they seem to get along with it.
No, he did say that he would accept it.
Yeah, so you accepting it is encouraging to me.
If you agreed to do it.
Yeah, if you, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I address one thing, Brian?
Sure. Robert, just give your name and why you're addressing us, please.
Okay. I'm Robert Forseth. I'm the other member of Doc Addy's. And just to respond to you, Lori, on the constant coming back and asking for something different, the, being in the business that we are with alcohol manufacturing is, it's a lot of regulation and oversight, and we have to make sure that everything we do lines up with all the entities that are overseeing us. So, the bank plays into there, the TTB plays into there, local ordinances, and giving over one hurdle often means that we have to start anticipating the next hurdle. And what we're finding is it often sends us back to the previous hurdle to have to jump it again. And that's kind of where we keep coming back. We took this to the banks with the personal guarantee and found out that it doesn't work for us.
Letter of credit.
Letter of credit.
Letter of credit, I'm sorry.
Personal guarantees.
I'll point that out, too. As Jan said, the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars actually comes out to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's true, but it also is with liquid assets. That's a one-to-one ratio. It would be two hundred and eighty thousand that we would have to come up with. If we put real property up as collateral, it actually gets calculated at seventy-five cents on the dollar. So, it would actually be greater if we used our own personal assets that were not liquid. It does eat up a lot more money.
TTB is Tax and Trade Bureau, one of the bureaus that alcohol, tobacco, and firearms of the federal government, which regulates manufacturing of spirits.
Are you folks in business already doing that?
No. Don't have our TTB permit yet, Tax and Trade Bureau.
That's not to mention either the historic society and the tax credits we're trying to acquire through them. And they have their own set of regulations on us, too, that we have to make sure this agreement lines up with them.
I thought the WEDC had some of the regulations that they had in place, too, you know, so everybody's going to have that.
Any other comments? Dave, go ahead.
I'll comment that I'm all in favor of the letter of credit, but I would give that up only the condition of the one-time payment at the end when it's all completed. That's the only other way I can see is protecting this. And I'm not so sure, I don't know the math either, but I understand it would cost more to pay up the interest in the meantime, but maybe that would be less or equal to than the letter of credit, which you're paying each month for a letter of credit. I'm wondering what the difference would be there. I'm not going to figure it out. That's businessman's person's job, but I will not go for a letter, unless one-time payment.
So, basically, what, again, I'm going to go back to this, is Jan is, and we do have a development agreement that was prepared, it will have to change also, but we do have one that we received from Attorney Markowitz, who is our attorney on these kinds of things, that does say a personal guarantee versus the letter of credit. And that, we did get quite a while ago, actually, not knowing which direction we were going to go in. So, we do have a template for that, although there'll be some wording that still needs to be changed in there. So, we do have that available to us. So, what Doc Addy's is asking us for tonight is, is that the wording be changed in the development agreement to match the grant agreement, which would say going out of business within five years and moving out of state. And that would replace the statement, which basically says the city would pay this back no matter what, within that five-year period, if it was not successful. And then the second thing would be to change the development agreement from a letter of credit to a personal guarantee by Jan and Robert. And the third thing, which is coming from the city's side of it, is that it would be a one payment at the end of the project instead of two payments, and that would be the part of the development agreement. And then, Henry, you had one other thing that you had suggested that we asked for?
Outstanding invoices.
Yeah, and that the outstanding invoices be paid. There are some outstanding invoices that Doc Addy's owes the city, and so that those do get paid before the mayor would sign this development agreement.
Can I make one clarification, Mayor? Just so Jan and Robert are both on the same page. This is a personal guarantee by both of them, that they'll be signing with the developer's agreement. It will not be based on one. It's based on both individuals, or all parties of the LLC.
Okay.
Correct?
And you understand that, Jan and Robert?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you go back over number one, that the developer's agreement will match the WEDC agreement?
Grant agreement. It will match the grant agreement.
Yes.
That says "and" instead of the wording that it has now. And that wording says, I don't have, I can't find it this quick, but what does it say now? Can you help me, Brennan?
I wasn't looking at that. But we will make the language coincide with what WEDC approves as for the "and" versus the "or."
Okay. So, there's, there's actually three things that, that are two things that Jan is asking for, and there are two things that the city are asking for. The two things, one of the things that the city is asking for is part of the development agreement. And the third, the second thing that the city is asking for is just to pay the outstanding invoices before the city would agree to sign the development agreement.
Mayor, could we do that in two, two motions?
You can. Do anything you want. Actually, Lori, yeah. Are you willing to make a motion?
On one of them.
You don't have to. It sounded like you were ready to make one.
No, I just wondered if we could break it down, because two of them kind of go together, and two of them kind of go together.
No, that's really the decision of the person that makes the motion, whether they want to.
It was just simply a question. I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, you certainly can. You certainly. We have a development agreement, and it's kind of like a template, basically, and it can be changed. And that's what, basically, they're asking to do under negotiations. So, again, do we have a motion? And maybe it's easier to do it, as Lori suggested. Let's ask, do we have a motion that would change the development agreement to match the grant agreement that says "and," which basically would say that they have to go out of business for five years and move out of the state? Do we have a motion?
I'd make that motion.
No, that was under the grant agreement. Now, we're asking for the development agreement. Yeah.
I'd make that motion as you stated it, Mayor, unless you want to state it again.
It basically is "and."
The development agreement matches?
Well, match the grant agreement that we have accepted tonight. Now, that says "and" instead of "or." So, we have a motion by Pritchowski. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Dave Peterson. Discussion. Okay, Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Neal?
Aye.
Lori Chesnut?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Abastain.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Mary Fair? Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstain, one no, and one absent. Motion carried.
Before we go on to the next item, then, Alan, are you willing to share, because people are asking?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry. I should have mentioned this before. Robert Forseth is my attorney.
Okay. All right. So, he's abstaining because of a conflict that he has, not because he can't make a decision. It's because of, okay.
Also, why I'm not discussing the issue.
Absolutely. I get that. Okay, the second item was, are you willing to change from a letter of credit to a personal guarantee of the members of the LLC, both members of the LLC, or all members of the LLC? I think there's only two currently, if I'm right?
We're taking on a third partner.
So, all three partners would be personally guaranteeing, then? Okay.
I'd make that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion by Pritchowski. Do we have a second? Okay, Scott, are you willing to add that to your motion?
Yes, I'm willing to.
Okay.
The one payment at the end.
All right. So, we're actually voting on two parts of the development agreement. One is, is that it's changed from a personal guarantee, or a letter of credit to personal guarantee by all members of the LLC, and, and that there will only be one payment made, and that will be at the end of the project. And I think, actually, Brennan?
At the completion of the project?
Brennan, you had suggested that we give ourselves some, like, thirty days after the end of the project, just in case we have some issues with WEDC getting the money and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we'll disperse the money within thirty days of receiving it from WEDC, but again, it's, it's all based upon WEDC. It'll typically take about forty-five days to review the payment and send it back to us, so as soon as that comes back.
We'll disperse it.
Yes.
Okay. So, are you okay, Scott, with agreeing to that, the thirty days? Okay. We just need some kind of time. Are you all right with that, with the second? Eric, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just curious, what does "end of project" mean? Is that when you cut the ribbon and people start going there? I mean, what does that mean, "end of project"?
Well, I mean, I assume that they're not going to, I mean, I'll say with it, I would say within thirty days of opening a business is probably the best situation. I mean, no?
Yeah, no, you're fine.
I would say within thirty days of open, that we'll disperse the money to the applicant, or what's that, not going to the applicants, going to the bank, within thirty days of opening of the business.
You okay with that, Jan?
We were under the impression it was at completion of construction.
No, completion of construction is, isn't that going to be pretty close to when you open?
Hopefully.
I mean, really. Realistically, we're talking, the end of construction and opening are going to be pretty darn close to the same, aren't they?
It should be.
If I could refer to Tom, I think he actually said something that makes sense.
I'm Tom Hoffman. Microphone, please. I'm Tom Hoffman. I'm the project manager on the project. Typically, in these sort of cases, it defaults to the architect issuing the letter of completion to the state and the issuance of the occupancy permit by the local building inspector. So, that's typically how we determine what is the end date of the construction project. So, that would probably coincide with each other.
Which we understand, and being architectural background, I understand that, but that I don't think secures, we want this, I think the council wants to see this project open for business. So, I think it's safer for the council to accept it within thirty, within thirty days of opening of the business. Because again, you know, no offense, but if the project closes and then they sell the business, that's, so I think we'd rather see the business open.
Okay. Can't you get open the business fully completing the construction?
You can't open without a certificate of occupancy issued by.
But it won't be finished, because they're not doing the second phase, if you want to look at it that way, but yeah.
I think one thing that we have to remember is, once we complete the construction, there may be a soft opening or something that he would do. He needs to get his staff on board and trained, and there's a period of time. It makes it difficult for us as a construction manager to pay our subcontractors in a timely manner if there would be an extended period of time after the completion of construction before he would open the business. That may take anywhere from fif, two weeks to a month after completion in order to get his staff trained, all of his, we can't, he can't really occupy the building until we've received the letter of substantial completion from the architect, as well as the building permit, you know, the occupancy permit, so.
We're making the payment to the bank for the mortgage, to lower the mortgage. We're not paying it towards the construction loan. So, during the project, you're going to have a construction loan, which you'd be drawing down on to pay your subs and everything else, and at the end of completion of the project, you'll be converting that over to a mortgage. So, within thirty days of opening the business, we would make a payment to the bank.
Okay.
So, it could work. Might cost a little bit more in interest still, but it, it.
It's not uncommon from the other language that we've seen in some other agreements.
So, you're suggesting within thirty days of opening?
Of operation, correct.
Okay, Scott?
Okay.
Excuse me. Oh. Is this a time when we can discuss the motion that's on the floor? I would like to separate out the two items that we're talking about, the, whether we're going to have a letter of credit or a personal guarantee, and the, the, the second.
Well, they are one motion. So, you could talk about one of the items, but they are one motion.
Okay.
Unless you can get these two to take back their motion and just vote on one at a time. But you could certainly talk about one of those items. So, go ahead.
Okay. That's what I'd like to happen. I'd like you to take back the motion, and I'd like to, because I feel very strongly that we need to have the letter of credit in place, but I also want to have one payment on completion of the work and opening of the business. So, I don't know how I would vote if we have the two together.
Okay. And I think Dave had asked for them both to be there, and I'm not, hopefully not speaking for you, Dave, but from what I understand is, he's having a hard time voting for the personal guarantee versus the letter of credit, unless he knows that it's going to be one payment.
I don't think they're related.
Well, he thinks they are.
I know. But that's where I'm going to have trouble.
Yeah. Okay.
Brian?
Hold on a second. Let me let council talk here. Are you done yet, Barry?
I am finished.
Okay. So, you would ask Scott and Dave to take back their motion and second, and only vote on one item at a time?
Correct.
And are you willing to do that, Scott?
I'd like to see him just...
I'd like to see him just...
As is?
Stay as is, and let's just go fruition here.
Okay. All right. So I guess the answer is no, Mary.
One more thing, where does Henry's monies come in that he wants paid?
That's another motion.
That's another motion? Good.
That's a completely another motion.
Okay.
Because it's not part of the development.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, Robert, I'm sorry.
To help move this along, we are willing to do it, the money being distributed upon the start of business. So then, just so we don't have to spend our whole night here debating that.
Okay. I know, they're not debating it anymore. They're just getting ready to vote. Any other discussion on that? So we have two items in there, changing from a letter of credit to personal guarantee, and then it also will be just one payment 30 days after opening, at the most. It could be before that. Right. But no more than 30 days after the opening of the business. Okay.
Right. Semantics again. Could we have that, instead of opening to beginning of operations?
Is that the same thing?
No, because again, it's going back to, I think, the soft opening and everything else.
Well, if you're hiring people and doing a soft opening, you're opening somewhere along the line, aren't you? You think? I mean, I, what's, does anybody know? I'm not an English teacher, but what's the difference between opening and, opening the business and operations?
Maybe spell it out within the development agreement. That is, is operations within a certain timeframe before their soft opening, if that's where you want to get to. I'm sure we can get Alan to get us the language that we, that council's looking.
I think we can work there, can't we? Yeah? Jan, I think, yeah. Brennan and Jan and our attorney can work with that, because we're real close on that part of it. Okay, any other discussion? So those two items, and that will finish up the changes on the development agreement then, that we're talking about. So hearing no other discussion, I'll ask Sandy to take the roll.
Mary Fair?
No.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Scott Pritchowski?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Abstain.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson? Five ayes, three nos, one abstain, and one absent. Motion carried.
Okay, so that's the part of the development agreement. The last item then, of course, was, staff had asked that any outstanding invoices be paid before the development agreement is paid by the city.
Signed.
Signed. Sorry. Signed by the city. Motion by Hackett, second by Olson. There are some, do you want to know what they are?
No, just what...
Okay. Your, their motion was, is that any outstanding invoices that Doc Addy owes the city has to be paid before the city will sign the development agreement.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need a roll?
And what are those invoices related to?
Kathy?
Doc Addy signed a pre-development agreement in which the, the city does not pay for attorney's fees and consultant fees in the development of the agreement. Right now, there is, I believe, $4,600 outstanding in fees from Attorney Markowitz's office that need to be paid for yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pritchowski?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Abstain.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett? Eight ayes, one absent, and one abstain. Motion carried.
All right. I think unless you have something else, Jan, or council?
I do not. Thank you for your time.
All right. Have a good night. Thank you. We'll move on then. Next, we have, and this is basically leftover, because we gave Attorney Hart the night off last time, but we have ordinance number 0217. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 9, dealing with public peace and good order. This is the second, second reading of this ordinance. Did anybody that had questions last time still have questions on that? You gotta keep it open, Terry, so they gotta move on.
I think, Mayor, I think why the question arose is, we didn't have the copy of the existing code with the ordinance. So there was a question about sports arena, today's question, that's defined in there, and smoking's still allowed at Swan.
And I think the question that Paul Hagan had, we didn't change. That was unchanged. So it, although he had a question about the ordinance, it was, it had nothing to do with the, with the accepting of the second reading here. So I think we're okay if you want to approve that tonight. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I would move to approve.
Motion by Whitman?
Second.
Second by Keeland, that we approve ordinance number 0217. Any discussion? It's an ordinance, so Sandy will take the roll.
Scott Pritchowski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
I'm gonna ask that we take a recess here. We've been going pretty strong for two hours. Let's, let's take 10 minutes and be back in session at 8:10. That will give Justin the opportunity to be prepared for his part of it. So we're gonna be in recess until 8:10 p.m. Okay, tonight's council meeting is back in session, and we are on letter D, the 9, 9D. And this has to do with the lead service lines. And I'll let Justin take over for here.
Thanks, Mayor. This goes back to Lake Street, and I got approval for the Lake Street construction project a while ago. And as I mentioned then, we broke the project up in, well, two projects. So we separated the public work, which is road and water main, from the private side work, which is the water laterals. And we delayed the project on purpose, just to try to marry up the funding from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, which they are offering. If you read the paper quite often, you'll see that Clintonville received some funds a while back, the same program, which they, basically, it's a principal forgiveness funding, but they pay for the lateral work on the private side only. So what this memo, and what I'm seeking here tonight, is action to approve a second contractor, which would come in same time as the other Lake Street work, and complete the, the water lateral work on the private side. Recent conversations with the DNR, we have been, we will be eligible to funding underneath this lead service line program for up to $200,000. And that's much more than we are anticipating. So with the first step, we're going to apply it to Lake Street and our project. So I'm looking for approval for David Tenner Corporation in the amount not to exceed $106,000. The low bid that they provided was $101,000 and a little extra. Just putting a little extra contingency on it, just like I like to typically do with construction projects, because sometimes you run into unknowns. However, if we do go above, that will also be covered by the, the DNR in this lead service line program. Behind my memo is the bid analysis from our engineering consultant, Cedar Core, recommending David Tenner. Everything is checked out. They're a reliable contractor. And I also included in the packet a poster that I had Rhonda help create for me, which I presented at a public information meeting, showing you basically where lead is in our system throughout the city. And what we're dealing with are the lead goosenecks. So that's the only portion that is on our side of the line. So a small, say, two to three-foot chunk of metal that helps connect the service lines to the mains. So that's there for your information, anyone else, if they have questions, so. If you do have questions, go ahead and ask. Otherwise, I'm, I'm looking for that motion.
Make that a motion, we go with David Tenner for not to exceed $106,000.
Second. A motion by Whitman, second by Hackett, that we approve of this agreement, contract with, for the lead service line with David Tenner Corporation of Green Bay, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed $106,000. And this is for the Lake Street project.
Question?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it. Is there any cost to the homeowners on this?
Not, no, not underneath this program. The work that's gonna be done to replace the, the service lines will be funded by this DNR program.
Wasn't sure if there was a partial to the homeowners or not?
No. There might be, I mean, we, the tricky part is trying to keep the two projects separate. They could have some costs with sidewalk replacement, but that'll be done underneath the other project. So the work underneath this project will be covered by the DNR.
Any other questions on this? It's a great project, and Justin, I compliment you on finding ways to be able to help our residents at very little cost, if, if any. So I think this is a great project for our city. So thanks. Any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Scott Pritchowski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
That's it for you, Justin? Wow. Wow. Okay, let's move on then. Acceptance of the broadband expansion grant to Wapakka Online. Josh?
We put in our application back at the end of June for a broadband expansions grant through the State of Wisconsin Public Service Commission for a expansion project that covers some central and eastern rural areas in Wapaka County, ranging from Fremont to Marion, based off different feedback and research that we did about areas that we could get into that were lacking some options. We, Wapaka Online was one of 53 applicants for this process. Thirteen grants were awarded, including Wapaka Online. So I'm looking for approval to accept that grant award tonight. The total cost of the project is a little over $72,000, with the grant covering $32,000, with the rest either covered from Wapaka Online reserves or from user setup fees.
What, am I missing this? But what do you anticipate for user setup fees?
That's just the standard setup fee that a user would pay. We built in some of the customer premise equipment into the grant.
Okay. Okay. So it's just part of the grant?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Just showing some funding from some other places. And it looks like most of the terms have stayed the same as the last time that we received one of these grants. Basically, anything that we do up to a certain point will get reimbursed, should either party terminate the grant at all. So if we get to a point where we don't complete everything, or don't complete portions, we will get reimbursed for the portions we've done, or if for some reason the PSC were to take the grant away from us, we'd get reimbursed for the actual work completed up to that point. That's part of their terms and conditions for that, and we'd have a 24-month period to complete the project. Any questions?
And again, I guess, just a question on how this is going to move forward, Josh. The idea is, is that we have to get some towers out there?
Correct.
And that's, we have not negotiated that yet, although we've talked to people, right?
Correct. Kind of how the, I anticipate the project going, it would get going this fall, using resources that are already in place. And I've been having a number of conversations with Andy Carlin at the county. He's the one in charge of their telecommunications towers, and he's working on an agreement as we speak to get over, did approved on his end and to get over to us. And we'd start out by going on their existing towers and start getting that infrastructure in place this fall. I would anticipate probably over the winter months, working with the county and possibly the town of Bear Creek, which is a proposed location for one of the towers, and seeing if we can come to an agreement. And if not, maybe find a private property owner or some other location for that tower to serve Bear Creek. So I'd anticipate that work happening over the winter months, so that once the nice weather comes in spring, we can have someone in place to erect those towers, get that equipment in, and then just keep building out from there. As there's been some word about this project out there, we've been hearing different things from different people. We've been learning about some areas that maybe have some needs, maybe some people that are unhappy with current service and current areas. So I think as we work through this project, we've got a general guideline in the grant application, kind of where we go. But I think as we get feedback and interest from people, that might shift things a little bit, or maybe change priorities of some things a little bit as we go along.
But again, the ultimate goal is to get high-speed internet to people that don't have it.
Correct.
And that's why we were accepted for that grant?
Correct.
Any discussion on this? So we gave Josh permission to apply for that grant, and now the state has given us that grant, and we will have to accept that. And that's what we're asking you to do tonight, is to approve the acceptance of that grant, and also to use Wapaka Online funds and user setup fees to, to get this project going.
I'll make that into a motion.
Motion by Keeland?
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve of the broadband expansion grant for Wapaka Online, and which will include the city using some of their own monies that are coming out of the online reserves. So those are not tax dollars. Those are reserves that are held within Wapaka Online, which is an enterprise fund. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Scott Pritchowski?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
One other comment. The governor will be in town this Friday to present this award, so check your email for details about that event. I'll send that out shortly.
Okay, next, then, we have, I guess Henry's up. We got purchase of a rear load accessible van for the city taxi fleet.
Thanks, Mayor. My memo starts on page 215. Back in late 2015, I requested and you authorized the submission of a grant, capital grant, and we were awarded that grant about a year ago. And they give you two years to make the purchase. The grant will cover 80% of the cost of the vehicle, and it's proposed that this new rear load vehicle would replace an '07 Crown Vic that's got about a quarter million miles on it. You can see the cost there. This would be a very basic vehicle, a 2017, 2018 Dodge Caravan. The DOT portion, again, would be 80%. Our share would be about $6,400. There is an accessory that we've been asked to purchase... There is an accessory that we've been asked to purchase that the grant will not cover, it's a $995, uh, option, and again, it's a attached, it's an electronic release retractor, it helps the driver release the wheelchair as it's, uh, mounted down in, in the back. Um, again, this was, uh, budgeted in our 2016, excuse me, 2017 capital plan, and it would be the goal to sell our '07 Crown Vic at surplus. Uh, again, in our capital plan, I thought maybe we could get maybe, was it 1,200 bucks for that? Yes, so that would, you know, reduce, uh, the net cost to the city for the vehicle. And there's some attachments in there.
Basically, we're asking that the vehicle be purchased and that we use, uh, about $7,400 worth of city funds to pay for the share that's not covered by the DOT.
Yes, sir.
So, we need a motion.
So move.
Motion by Fair?
Second.
Second by Keeland, that we approve of the purchase of a Dodge Caravan with a rear-load accessible lift and electronic retractor accessory with a cost to the city of $7,325 and 28 cents, less the, uh, sale of the old, uh, vehicle. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, bartender's license, uh, license report number 1380, there are one, two, three, four, five names on there, uh, we would be looking for a motion to approve, again, always, uh, pending any, uh, background checks, and also, if they owe anything to the city, they'll have to pay that before we give them their license.
So move.
Motion by Hackett?
Second.
Second by Whitman, that we approve license report number 1380. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion carried. All right, uh, let's go way back to the beginning, you wanna start over here? Well, let's go back, and we got, uh, department announcements and reports, and as always, we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you Mayor, good evening council. My report starts on page 11, and, um, we've been working on getting, uh, the budget process going, been a little bit harder because I keep getting interrupted with, uh, liability claims and workers' comp claims and everybody else coming into my office for information, so, um, just gonna have to close my door this week. Uh, we are, um, having, we did have some, uh, payments, uh, stolen from our Dropbox, our old Dropbox, um, and, um, we had to close it. We have a new box installed now, uh, it's silver, just like the library's Dropbox, but, um, uh, it's really small, you can't put a book in it. Um, so, um, it's, um, double secured on it, um, and we bought it from a, um, a payment, uh, company that, uh, makes these types of payment drop boxes. Um, I'm working with Baker Tilly and Forecast Five, I'm a beta test site, uh, for them to do this budget forecasting software program, and so you'll have some nice bells and whistles this year during the budget process with, um, forecasting, uh, wage, but, wage and benefits and, um, different debt service requirements, so it'll be much easier, uh, to, um, do the budget next, this coming year, and, um, that's all.
All right, thanks Kathy, any questions or comments? All right, let's go to the library, Peg.
I'll try and keep this brief, we do have author Jan, um, we have author Elizabeth Berg coming next Thursday at noon, um, it's a free program for the library, expect to have a big turnout, she is a New York Times bestselling author, at noon on the 24th. Also, we're planning for the solar eclipse that's gonna happen next Monday, and we have two programs this Thursday, one at 2:00 and one at 6:00, so you can come to either one, 6:00 one is right in this room, and it's really background on the solar eclipse, what you should, how you can make it a learning experience, we're giving out the free solar eclipse glasses, so you may want to attend at that. Um, also, the library's closed this Friday and Saturday, it, for Arts on the Square, our parking lot is closed, it's a good day for us to have training on Friday with our whole team, and, uh, we will open back up on Monday, um, nothing is due on those two days while we're closed.
All right, thanks, Peg, uh, any questions for Peg? Brennan, let's go.
Thank you Mayor, members of council, uh, report's on page 57. Um, we have started, uh, the next couple phases for the downtown plan, uh, with the street work, the internal teams for the, around the city hall project, the city square, and the main street met earlier this, last week with our consultants, and then I'm also partaking with Aaron's, uh, Rotary Riverview Park Plan update, so that should be an exciting time. Just want to give thank you to everybody, um, within the city that came out and participated in the summer block party, along with all the different departments with Park and Rec and DPW, Police Department, Fire Department, Finance, everybody that supported it, um, I, I think overall, um, it was a successful event, definitely need to make some tweaks and changes, and we're looking at starting, uh, some of those for next year. Um, we are probably gonna be doing a fall, um, type of, uh, sud shuffle to utilize some of the, um, existing mugs that we have, and I think we're gonna try to tie it into the Chambers Scarecrow Con- Competition, so looking forward to that. And briefly, McDonald's was approved last week, and Domino's is moving in next to the Intimate Fitness.
Any other questions? Comments? Uh, thank you Brennan, appreciate it. Justin, Public Works?
All right, thank you Mayor. So, starting as usual on the wastewater side, our cathodic protection project, uh, had a little delay due to weather, a lot of rain, uh, we finally got the painting work done, um, so the loud noise, that big backup generator will be going away probably tomorrow. Um, our skater system, I've mentioned the last couple times, we've had some issues, uh, we had an outside contractor come in and give our radios a tune-up, it seems like everything's on the up and up, so, uh, I'll keep you posted if anything else happens. Uh, street side, you already gave approval for the Lake Street project, uh, tomorrow we have the pre-construction project with all the contractors, uh, I say "we" as in Roger, myself, uh, and Mark Nolenberg, um, we should know more about the, uh, schedule, and I plan to, I guess, do some more public notification on that, the emergency services, all that, once we know more about the, the schedule and the details, uh, but we are still planning to start next Monday. Uh, Main Street, can't forget about that, Brennan mentioned that, we did have a meeting with our, our design engineers, uh, and Brennan did a very good job of taking all of Roger's complaints and funneling them down to, you know, comments, and, so we're working together on it, I, I meant to, to give, uh, Brennan an attaboy the other day, but I forgot, but anyways, we're working, I can't forget about Main Street. Uh, water utility, uh, well guys, we're doing a lot of valve exercising, uh, which is kinda different from basically meter changeouts, and we did kinda make a, a stink about doing a better job of that a couple years ago, uh, to stay compliant with the DNR, uh, regulations, so they're getting on top of that and, uh, starting those back up again. And finally, uh, facilities, I'd just like to mention that we've been doing a lot of LED replacements, uh, so we looked back at our, our electric bills from last year to this year and noted that City Hall, Library is down about $3,000, PD is down about $2,200, and Rec Center is down about $3,500. Well noted, it's been a cooler summer, so that does kick in, but also the lighting that we've replaced, uh, and we did replace the, uh, condenser units out here, the big AC, so, uh, a lot of these small improvements are showing to, to, are showing up on our bills, so, um, that's it for me.
Awesome. Any questions or comments for Justin? All right, let's, uh, move to Parks and Rec, Karen.
Thank you Mayor Smith, uh, also tried to make it brief, uh, we had a Friends of Wapaka Parks meeting on August 3rd, that was the first meeting we've had in over a year, tried to, uh, reinvigorate that group, uh, had some, we had good turnout, great comments, and, um, have been in touch with them via emails since, I think that'll be a very successful, uh, year here moving forward. Rotary Riverview Planning Committee, we also had that meeting on August 10th, Brennan alluded to that, I thought that went very well, want to thank everyone for being involved. Um, that'll be over the next six months, uh, that we'll be working with that committee. On July 24th, I did present to the Joint Finance Committee for the Wapaka School District, um, and then, uh, just yesterday, uh, we had a joint meeting with a bunch of, of the townships, Farmington, Dayton, Town Wapaka, and the Town of Lind, um, so those meetings, um, did happen, um, and I want to thank, uh, the people in this room that attended those. Uh, we do have, we did have our movie in the park, uh, that was on Friday, had about 150 people in South Park, that went well, had good weather, finally, uh, for both of our, our movies this summer, so Andrew was happy about that, I know that. Um, Sarah, we have some new staff in the senior center, we had a couple people, uh, that, one is done in the senior center and the other is on very limited hours right now, so, we have Kathy Roush who's starting August 21st, and Janet Heiner as a fitness instructor, starting August 3rd. CAP Services has wrapped up, um, their labor part of the Eco Park, and actually, Mike Johnson, who was with CAP Services, has moved onto Rawhide, and Rawhide has actually been there for the last month or so helping out with projects, and it's, with him transitioning from CAP to Rawhide, uh, that'll be helpful as Rawhide will continue to work there. Fallarama, just a reminder, is September 16th, we hope to see everybody there, also want to just, for anybody watching, if you're a vendor, uh, you will take more gladly, that is all I have.
And you'll probably continue to take donations to help with the Fallarama too, I would guess, right?
We would love anybody who would be willing to sponsor, and we thank everyone who has.
All right, thanks Aaron, any questions or comments for Aaron? Chief Fozell?
Thank you Mayor, council, um, my report can be found on page 40, um, it's be real brief, uh, last Saturday, we had our broad fry out at Fleet Farm, um, we were using money to, or trying to raise money to put Narcan in each of the squads, and we were hoping to hit a goal of $1,500. Um, we actually exceeded that goal, um, we ended up selling 320 brats and 70 hot dogs in about a four and a half hour period, so it was a huge success, and those that came out and supported, we really thanked them for doing that, and for the people that gave us a lot of donations, it was, it's wonderful. Um, we need to get it in our cars as quick as we can, we've, we're up to 18 overdoses this year, and last year we had five. So, we have training tomorrow, so we'll learn how to use it, and as soon as we get it, um, we'll be putting it in the cars. So, I'm excited that the community came together and supported us for that event. So, everything else I have in my packet is informational.
Great. Okay, any questions, comments for the chief? All right, let's go to the IT man, Josh.
Um, on the Wapaka Online side of things, we're finally recovered from all the storm damage, everything's back up and running, and actually, most of it running a lot better than before. Um, and staff's getting caught up on the projects that we had kinda before all those issues. Community media, we assisted with the summer block party, um, did some new business segments today, and, uh, this week, we're taping our next round of What's Happening Wapaka segments. Um, we've got Wapaka Local Live on Thursday featuring Galene Goodwill. Uh, IT side of things, just doing some general IT maintenance, helped with some fuel terminal upgrades at the airport, um, police department audit, and we fell out of contract on another AT&amp;T account we have, so we're going back to that same issue again, and AT&amp;T can't provide me any proof of when they sent us notification that our contract was ending, so, wish us luck dealing with that.
All right, thanks Josh, uh, any questions or comments for Josh? Henry?
Well, I'm gonna piggyback on, uh, what Kathy was saying a little bit about the budget, our next workshop will be after, then, our next council meeting, and we're gonna be focusing on the capital improvement plan. Um, we are gonna follow a lot similar process that we did last year, but we're gonna try to keep these workshops on the first Tuesday of the month. So, um, we're, as your staff, are gonna work really hard to try to keep that agenda as light as possible for the council meeting, so then we can move into the budget process. So, just the next three, uh, the first Tuesdays of the, of the month, that first council meeting, uh, we'll have some workshops. The next one again will be the CIP, then Personnel, and then, uh, the one in November, we hope to pull all the numbers together for you, uh, so you can, uh, prepare to adopt a budget. Um, the triathlons this weekend, so there'll be a lot of activity, Arts on the Square, there's a lot going on, uh, please come out and support those events. Uh, am working with a cross-department team to kinda retool our performance evaluation process, and we're at a point now where we wanna, um, roll it out and kick the tires and see how, how it's gonna work, so the staff, you're gonna hear a little more about that next week at our staff meeting. Uh, the Oz property, I think you should expect some, um, discussion on that in the coming next couple meetings. Uh, if you remember, you authorized me to proceed with an appraisal, and we did get that appraisal back. Uh, I have been in conversation with Kari Espenson and Russ Bucklewitz, and they want to come to council with a formal request to, uh, have the city, uh, give the property back to them, and they have some other, uh, things they would like for you to consider as part of, uh, that request. I do anticipate maybe that coming, uh, at the next meeting, uh, but that, please anticipate that. And then, uh, uh, finally, I've got a couple extra pair of solar eclipse glasses, we went online last night late to buy them, and, uh, all I could get was a half dozen, it cost 15 bucks, and 15 bucks to ship, uh, so, I've got a couple extra glasses, and then, uh, Lorraine Dunn, unbeknownst to me, went to, is it RNH Liquidators? Actually, welding helmet replacement glasses work really cool, and she found three or four of those for a buck twenty each. So, we're all ready to go, solar eclipse, if anybody need any glasses, sorry.
Okay.
I think it's pretty cool, I'm gonna be out there checking it out.
Any, so, you're willing to offer up the ones that you, for a buck twenty then, right?
Well, I thought I might make some cool glasses out of it, you know, just figure it out, we've got a week.
Uh, any other questions or discussion for Henry? Uh, if not, uh, we have a closed session, uh, that we need to have tonight, and, uh, this is a closed session to, to discuss, um, some negotiating, or some, uh, legal action that we have going on, and has been going on for a while.